18, welcome, we're gonna get crowded tonight. Your batteries charged on that camera? Okay, just making sure. Agenda amendments. Counsel, are there any agenda amendments?
Um, I would like to have the City Hall stonework request to be struck from the agenda. I don't have all the information I hoped to have.
Or there's a chair up in front of those.
Next month, okay.
My life, excuse me.
Hey, your life, Mr. Keever, we're knocking your back. We're not starting yet. Anything else on agenda amendments? Minutes, July 9, 2018, regular meeting.
I move we approve.
I second it.
Any more discussion, Counsel, on the minutes for July 9, 2018? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna go close for the minutes. Payroll voucher number 18-07, July wages and salaries.
I move we approve the payroll voucher. Second?
Second, my Lou. Any more discussion, Counsel, on July wages and salaries? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Moving on, accounts payable, checks pre-written, and accounts payable.
I move that we approve, uh, July checks pre-written and July accounts payable.
Second?
Any further discussion, Counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
I abstain.
You do.
Noted. The Lincoln accounts.
Is that third one, is that residential or is that a business or what is that?
The third one from the very top or?
Yes, the fourth line with the third listing.
It's residential.
Okay.
Anything else on the Lincoln accounts? Moving on, pool use, Kathy Robertson, USD 298. She in the hall?
No.
I think they're just asking to use the pool, aren't they, for school?
We'll just wait and see if she comes in.
She comes, we'll move it on later, I don't think that's gonna be a public issue. Accounts receivable billing, Penny Andreessen, off the penny.
Want to speak?
Yes, sir, please.
Yes, yes, I got this bill for, what was it, four hundred and some dollars to put in a new meter at my shop over here at 121 West Court. And, uh, we needed some new bathroom stools, so we needed to shut the meter off. Roger Hayworth come over, his wrench would not fit, so I had to go to the city and to get one. And the city come up, shut the water off, fixed the stool, turned it back on, the water started running all over the place out of a meter that was probably put in there in 1951. That's when we built the building. And, uh, I feel that, uh, I really shouldn't have to, uh, you might say, buy a slot machine for the city to collect the money off of, because that's not what it was. I mean, that, um, the old meter was, you might say, shot, they should've been replaced anyway. And surely, when you shut a meter off and turn it back on, it shouldn't leak, it oughta, it oughta work. In a way, it didn't, and they replaced it, and they sent me a bill for four hundred and some dollars, and I feel that's not right.
But as the ordinance says, that you're responsible from the meter to your property.
We're responsible, we've always been responsible in our whole lifetime, from the meter up to our building. And from the meter back, along to the city. Unless you people just turn around and, uh, change the laws during the night or something like that, that's the way it has been for long as I can remember. And somebody build a new house, once you take water up with the meter, and then they pay for the meter on. So I, I feel I shouldn't have to, not that I can't do it, I mean, that ain't no problem, but it's just the idea that, uh... But I, I don't feel like, what you're collecting, it's 1951, how many years is that? How many thousand, million gallons of water have you run through that?
That's sixty-seven years.
How much, uh, money have you, uh, taken in off of it? And, uh, then here I get this bill, plus...
But, what if Roger would've shut that meter off, and then it still leaked?
The meter was, the meter was not shut off. When I got there, uh, Roger said that, uh, well, listen, my...
Penny, can you hear Jess here? Can you come around? He can get a chair now and sit down.
Shut that valve off, and I said, "That valve can't be shut off." I talked to Penny back when his last business left there, and, uh, that meter was getting pulled out, and I went and talked to Mr. Andreessen, and I said, "I pull that meter out, you're gonna be paying for a new valve, 'cause it won't shut off." And he said, "Well, don't take it out of there," and I said, "I can leave it in there, but if it comes out, you're paying to get it..." Well, this went on, and, uh, then this happens, and, uh, Hayworth's is trying to do some work inside, and they come and talk to me, and I said, "I can't shut that valve off." When I opened the lid open, the water was in the pit showing that the valve, now it's leaking externally. So now I have no choice but to dig it up. So I go talk to Mr. Andreessen and tell him, that, hey, we're gonna have to dig this thing up and replace it. And he said, "Well, you gotta do what you gotta do, Steve's gonna be paying for it." So we went and repaired.
I really didn't say I was gonna go pay for it, you just told me what you said.
And if you look in an ordinance, it says, "If a certain line leak is discovered between the meter and the main, the repairs shall be made by an authorized city employee at the owner's expense." It's been like this for thirty-seven years that I've worked here.
Well, how long has it been?
I'm sorry to have a misunderstanding, I...
How long has it been since 1951?
Uh, the meter was changed, the meter was made in 2013, the city owns the meter. The meter was not changed, it was the valve that was changed. The valve is what the problem was. The meter was made in January of 2013, it was installed in 2000...
Not in the last...
Uh, April of 2013, and your business, uh, that left there was February of 2016, and that's when I come and talk to you, and that's when you told me, "Don't mess with it, don't just leave it," so I left it. But when, when I go to the pit and they're trying to work in your side, they couldn't get it on. Your letter, your letter stated they borrow ranches, they do not borrow ranches. If you look in the ordinance, it also says that only person that's authorized to turn off the valve is a city employee.
Even if you didn't turn it on, turn it on or anything?
We did not.
Should the thing leak anyway?
We went straight to digging it up after I talked to them.
And then, and then here, here is another thing, uh, that I, uh, kinda, little bit, uh, teed off about. They, uh, of course they dug it all up, they put in, and they had a new tube to go around the new meter. I couldn't see anything wrong with the hole, but they charged me for it. There was five guys besides him, but somebody come along, and he had to go down and find Doc Saunders' old place and, and visit with them. And there was five guys up there, some of them laying on their stomachs, sitting on the curb, and watching two guys do all the work. I get charged for three people, forty bucks an hour, and I don't think that's right.
In reality...
Plus, and why, they had to replace that, uh, round concrete tube around there, 'cause I absolutely couldn't see nothing wrong with the other one that they took out.
Those normally are cracked or it's tiled, and that's the reason why they did it.
It wasn't, it wasn't busted up, and, and if it'd been cracked up, you could've, you could've showed it, you could've showed it to me.
They get, they replace it. If we find something, well, I, I showed everything else to you, I should've showed you that.
No, you showed me the pipes that might be going into my building that'd be getting wore out, that we're gonna have to replace someday.
Same way to the main.
But am I gonna have to buy another main if I have to, uh, another meter, if I have to, uh, because we can't shut the damn thing off, or what?
You can shut it off now if you got a new valve. It's the same unit.
I'm just, uh, uh, poor old place been there since 1951 and...
That's not right, what was that, Penny, you're wrong on that fifty-one.
Yeah, the meter was put in in 2013.
And that, I didn't even...
But the city owns the meter.
And that I didn't even know anything about.
Yeah, the city owns the meter.
Nobody told me anything about that.
He goes and pays for the meter, but it hasn't been in there since 1951, that's my point.
As far as I know, it was, I have no inkling that anything was put in since then.
And honestly, in reality, I should've charged nine chargeable hours, and I charged three. I tried to be nothing but fair with these things, and I know that people...
And there were two guys done the work, and, uh, like I say, he, he laughed, and there was, uh, five guys around here, and it looks to me like the city would have something for them else to do, uh, like maybe tearing up that old house that just fell in.
You got two guys that are in the hole, they have to cut it out.
One guy was in the hole, I was there, one guy was in the hole, one guy was in the hole.
It's done hot. The guy that's on the belly, he's the one that holds the valve on, because you're cutting into this line without shutting all the businesses off of town. So that line is blown, full pressure, and you got a guy that man to pump, and then you got a guy that watches the bank. Because if that hole is four foot or deeper, and that bank cave, then it can kill you. There's a reason for people being there. And then, once you're done with that, then you take and you put that, set that pit and the meter back, and then you shovel all the dirt, put the backhoe, put it in, rake it out of there, and leave it as nice as you can. So I would not have been out of line charging them nine chargeable hours, and he got charged three.
Yes, maybe, maybe that's his, uh, but if you think that's, uh, the way the city operates, uh, uh, if we're trying to get a new business started in there, and if that's, uh, uh, the way you feel about it and everything, I'll go ahead and, and pay the bill, but it just kinda seems like a... Poor old Lincoln for how many years? There's everything in their power to, uh, get people to leave town, and this is one of them. Another one is grass out in the, we can't even move snow out in the street, can't do nothing. That's all I have.
Moving on, city ordinances, Keith Buttonoff.
I'm here for some clarification of, of some of the ordinances. First off, I was out of compliance on my sewer, and I've hit it, and I had made verbal contact with Mr. Meyer, the superintendent, about I was gonna mow my lot. There was no time discussed on what I had to do, I had been served notice, but we agreed face to face that, that I would, I would mow that lot with no deadline, that was not mentioned. I come home one evening with mower to mow it, I didn't have enough money to rent a mower to mow it, and it was mowed. Few days later, I get this eight hundred dollar bill for mowing four lots. I had to struggle paying bills. And, uh, there's other issues on the line that, you've got an ordinance posted out here at the door we walked in about abandoned vehicles. I keep mine cleaned up, that's not an issue with me, but I gotta look at one every time I walk out my back door. A city employee has abandoned vehicle that has not been tagged or insured for quite a few years. And there's, my feeling is that if you want me to enforce things, do the, the codes of what the city demands, the city should also do things of their own. I don't, uh, tell me where that's unfair. So, uh, and here's other issues lying here, I wanna see your action on this, see what response I get here first before I go any further. That, that's all I've got, thank you.
You want response on what?
Why certain people do not have to mow their yards, why certain people do not have to clean up their abandoned vehicles.
June the twenty-sixth, you and I had a conversation on North Seventh Street about you, uh, mowing. You said, "I will mow that in a couple of days," and I said, "Okay, Keith, I'll give you a couple of days."
That was not part of our dispatch, Jess.
Yes, it was.
No, it wasn't.
I'm not gonna argue, we, we have an ordinance, uh, you were given plenty of time.
Yes, I agree with that.
I think when we finally mowed it, it was, uh, the nineteenth of July, so that would've been...
Your notes say seventeen days.
So, uh, so we gave you plenty of time to mow that.
I don't know that those notes are accurate.
Did you take notes, Keith, to have any documentation?
It was about seven days after we had our talk that it was mowed.
But you didn't write anything down?
I did not write anything down.
You still have a sewer issue, your sewer is still leaking, it's dripping.
And where's that at?
At the joints that you put in there.
Okay, I'll draw that to my attention and fix it.
And, uh, the mess needs to be cleaned up. I lined it twice. This is the property. This is the sewer. This is the lot that you can see why the building was mowing, what they had to do to get it down. This is the, uh, the bills that Mr. Buttonoff owns in the city. And this is what his fix was, and you can see that there's air gaps between the...
So you're saying that that coupler, I need to replace that coupler to make that tight?
It's the wrong size coupler, uh, Keith, you can see, it, it, that's actually supposed to hold five pound pressure, is what that's supposed to hold. And I just asked that you get a blue dawn and then clean up the mess. That's the one that you're fighting, that's... That line, yes. And this is our second go-around, the first time the city went in and he didn't fix it, so we, the city ended up spending the money to get the plumber in, get the sewer vaunted, and the city never got recovered from the special scene. So this is my first time issue.
A city ordinance is a city ordinance, is that correct?
Say again?
It's a city ordinance, a city ordinance, no matter what it is?
I'd have to let the attorney answer that question.
The, uh, materials that you, uh, Keith cited the ordinance, and he even sent you a copy of it, on the nuisance, on the nuisance side of it. And on the sewer issue, uh, as, uh, Mr. Meyer has said, you know, you could have a pressure test, it leaked, it didn't do any good to hook it up because it's leaking, your, your raw sewage is going right into the ground, onto the ground. And these pictures show it up, and they certainly demonstrate the, the state of the nuisance that exists there. And that's all that anybody wants you to do, is get it cleaned up and keep it cleaned up, and that's what this process is all about. And, and you were notified you could have a hearing, and I'm glad you came in, because you're getting your hearing right now. I don't know how anybody can look at these photographs without being disgusted and knowing that it is a health nuisance above and beyond the raw sewage going out of the pipe into the ground under your house.
I think mowing's probably the minor issue here.
Well, I, I guess I'll, uh, I'll see how I feel on this matter in a couple of days, I will probably contact KDHE myself on some other issues that are lying within the city.
They are aware of that, Mr. Buttonoff, uh, I've called...
Well, I wanna make sure.
Yeah, they're aware of your complaint, and, uh, we just passed an environmental, uh, survey, so, um...
Well, I'll, I'll talk, I'll speak with them myself.
They are aware of the issue, and they said that, uh, they got an option, either shut your water off if you don't clean it up, or they will come...
I'm not talking about my personal bill, Jess, you know what I'm talking about.
No, I know what you're talking about, and I mentioned that to her.
That's what this is about, is yours.
Yeah, so, what I, what...
The age-old, the age-old...
We'll see, we'll see, I'll, I'll...
Keith's an age-old fan, I can't just let this go without saying something. Everybody, whether they get picked up for any kind of a thing, can always say, "Well, what about so-and-so, what about so-and-so, what about so-and-so?" That doesn't matter, this is, this is focused on yours, it doesn't matter...
I understand that.
...what the city has or has not done in some, there's probably a reason somewhere that it hadn't been done, but it doesn't matter. This is all about your situation, Keith, that's all it is.
Anything else, Mr. Buttonoff?
Not at this moment.
Anything to add, Counsel?
No, I haven't, I have, uh, Mr. Buttonoff liked to look at photographs, I think he should have that opportunity before the hearing closes. If he wants it, it'd be good.
Moving on, 2017 audit report, Danielle. Oh, yeah, 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 sorry, sorry. Sorry, Kathy.
I apologize, no, I apologize, um, I am here to request the use of the pool from eight seventeen to eight thirty-one for our K-8 grades.
What were those dates again, I'm sorry?
The dates are, uh, K, uh, eight seventeen through eight thirty-one, and it's K-8 and, um, our advanced PE class, which would be, um, twelfth graders. We're not gonna be doing junior high this year, so, or, I mean, the, the freshmen, so...
I remember that we allow the school to use the pool facilities from eight seventeen through eight thirty-one, and that, that access arrangements be made with City Hall.
I still say.
Any more discussion, Counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
I abstain. I'm gonna touch with Heather.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too.
All right, now moving on, two thou...
We have to have our budget at eight, there's no time delay, so...
All right, so two, we can...
I don't think she can do our audit report in three minutes.
Okay, we'll wait. About, can't you get started and stop at eight?
Yeah, or do you wanna address your engagement letter?
Um, yes, our engagement is up this year, we've done it three year in the past, and so, um, basically this covers, uh, not only the audit, but any questions that Heather, any of the staff may have between now and the audit. So I went ahead and brought another engagement letter, um, basically what I did is I kept the fee the same for the first year, so it matches this year's fee, and then I went up three percent to cover... Um, so if you have any questions, you don't have to approve it tonight, but I just wanted to bring it with me, since I only come here once, once a year, other than the audit, so...
Do you have any concerns or comments, Heather?
No, that's because our engagement letter was last year, two percent increase. They're easy to work with, and when I make the call, they're help there, they're...
That's very important as far as I'm concerned.
Yes.
I would move that we approve the letter of engagement between the city of Lincoln and Adams Brown, Baron and Ball. I second that.
Any further discussion, Counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? It is Hollington, Hollington, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Let's make sure I pronounced it right. Eight o'clock, two thousand nine... Eight o'clock, two thousand nineteen budget, public hearing, received comments.
Did you put money in for the new expansion? For a lot of money in the expansion?
And there's money in there for some work, which we don't use it this year. It'll... And there's some room, but...
I think she was talking about the...
Upstairs?
Yeah.
There's room, it's the general room.
Okay. Because I think if we keep having crowds like this, we need to...
Sure.
Yeah. I did the best I could without raising the heck. And trying to cover everything that was requested.
Any further comments from counsel or the city, citizens, on the two thousand nineteen budget? Why entertain a motion to adopt the two thousand nineteen budget?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion, counsel, on the budget? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone to pose?
Do you need to sign up for free copies or something? Yes.
I'll introduce you properly now, so, sorry.
No, you're fine.
Two thousand seventeen audit report. Danielle Hollingford for Adams, Brown, Baron, and Ball CPA is with us.
All righty. Um, I think you've kind of all heard my spiel before, but if you have any questions, just stop me. I know you're just on getting this, so I'll try to go over as, you know, you've had a long night. I'll go over as quick as I can, but you can also always reach out to me if you have anything come up. Heather has my contact information, so... So if you want to turn to page one, two, and three of the audit report, and then I'll go over the letters. The most important thing of the audit is your opinion and what you received. It's kind of like a grade. You received an unqualified opinion, which is the highest opinion you can receive. And that's on page two of the audit report. It's the third paragraph down. You received this on regulatory basis, which is K-MAG or it's similar to cash basis. You receive an adverse opinion on GAAP because we don't do accruals. We don't follow GAAP. So the third paragraph is the most important paragraph of the audit report. And then on page four, this is the financial statement that we're issuing the opinion on. And it's of pooled cash. Everything is combined together by fund. At the end of the year, you ended with three point two million in unencumbered cash. That's up about three hundred thousand from last year. Most of that is attributed to the electric utility fund because of the rate increases to help pay your bond that's going to be coming due. So there's a little bit of a time difference there with when your first qualify payment comes due. So the cash looks like it's doing relatively well, but it will, it is set aside for a purpose. The other funds stayed relatively the same. You were able to put away reserves, which is always a good thing. It looks like you had about ninety-five thousand that were put away into the reserves this year, the utility reserves. The next several pages are the footnotes, and they explain the accounting policies that the city follows. The different policies that, that are in place for vacation, sick leave, capers, basically just details of what the city offers. The only new footnote this year that we did add was some extra detail on your capital project for the electric fund. And that's on page nine. We show what was spent up to December thirty-first and what your project authorization was. So that footnote was new this year for that project. The remaining footnotes have been, are the same as what they've been in the past. But on page twelve is where we talk about your debt, which I think is important. On page twelve and thirteen, and at the end of the year, you ended with one, one million eighty thousand five eighty. This year you have principal payment of ninety-eight thousand and interest of forty-five for a hundred and forty-three thousand. That will be due this year. Your payment ended in twenty thirty-two. And it doesn't look like you pay off any until twenty twenty-four. On page fourteen, this is a summary schedule of your actual expenditures to what you budgeted. You have no budget violations this year. You're well under budget on most funds, except for Parks and Recreation, which we run pretty tight with salaries. And then the remaining several pages are the details of each fund and what went through them. Nothing major to point out. We do have the new fund for the new projects. Basically an in and an out, the proceeds coming in and then going back out. Like I said, with the reserves, you were able to put away reserves this year. If you kind of flip through those, if you have any questions on anything, let me know. As you're flipping through those, I'm going to go through the letters because I want to commend the city staff on their work this year in getting recommendations cleaned up. We didn't really have a whole lot of control issues. We, you know, for this size of the city, it really is something to applaud yourselves on for the, the size and the control that you do have in place. And it's always important that the board stays, stays involved. So really, the only ones we have are segregation of duties, which you can't really get away from. And then we have, the, the reseeding process is still all being, being done through journal entries, which we don't really like to see if you have a automated process. We'd rather it goes through an automated process. And Heather is working on that, so I'm sure we'll, we'll get something resolved with that. Other than that, the only other comment we had is gift certificates or anything given at Christmas that's monetary really has to be considered a fringe benefit and included in pay. So keep that in mind if you're doing Christmas presents or gifts as gift cards that's still considered in the IRS eyes, part of your pay. And it didn't run through payroll this year, so something to keep in mind. I did send the IRS fringe benefit documentation to Heather, so she knows now.
The chamber books?
Yeah.
Because they're not running for payroll and being taxed.
And you can grow some up so that the city pays the taxes and so that it doesn't affect the employees. But to do it correctly, it doesn't have to go on your person, so... Other than that, I didn't have any other comments. Great job, the city staff.
Anything else, Danielle?
I don't have anything, if you don't have any questions for me.
I have one quick question.
Okay.
Page five is talking about the financial reporting entities.
Uh-huh.
The Port Authority, Housing Authority, and Library. Those, do you guys audit?
We don't, we don't. They don't, aren't, the state of Kansas, if you're five, over five hundred thousand in receipts, you have to be audited. These are considered related municipal in, in, in K-MAG sides. You don't have to audit them. You can, but their receipts are usually well under, so it's not required. So we, we do kind of glimpse at them. They bring their stuff in, and we do kind of glimpse through them, but we do not audit them.
Okay.
And just so you know, if we did audit them, because it doesn't run through the city, we would have to go there and do controls and all of that stuff with them as well, so...
But their books are presented during the audit, but you don't officially audit them?
Right, they bring them in, and we kind of flip through just to make sure there's not grants or things that could affect the city as well. Make sure we aren't opening something, you know, because they're kind of underneath the city, so... But we, we don't.
Any further questions? I need a motion, I have...
Yeah, I'll move that we approved the audit report for two thousand seventeen.
I second it.
Any further discussion, counsel, on the audit? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone to pose?
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Oh, you think you're up next?
I just know that we're getting on her chair.
Nobody even offered you. Yeah, nobody even offered you a chair, did they?
No. That's okay.
Well, welcome. CDBG and Waterline Project, Nicole McDaniel with NCRPC, and Stuart Porter with Schwab Eaton are here. Welcome.
Thank you. Um, I guess a, a quick update. We have a kayak meeting scheduled for tomorrow. What time is this one?
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock, okay. We have put together the draft preliminary engineering report. There will probably be a few tweaks made to it, but it is generally complete. We have a total project cost of one million two hundred five thousand four hundred sixty-one dollars. That essentially is very, very close to a fifty-fifty split, so that you're getting the most bang for your CDBG grant dollar, assuming that, that the grant is awarded. So six hundred thousand dollars is the maximum grant that you can apply for. So it's essentially a dollar-for-dollar match. We worked with Jess and his crew to identify a project area. And we put together a map. If anybody wants to see a map, you're more than welcome. I'll show you the map, but it, it takes care of a, a very substantial portion of your existing cast iron lines, and certainly the, the ones that have been identified as the worst amongst the ones that are remaining. So...
How much would be remaining left of lines, I mean, cast iron lines?
Oh, I would, I would, I would bet there's probably still a million dollars, but...
That much left?
Oh, yeah.
After this?
Oh, yeah. But the upside is, is that the ones that are remaining are the ones that the city hasn't had as much, you know, nearly as much problems with. Yeah, yeah. I mean, the unfortunate reality is you have a lot of cast iron lining there.
Is this just a certain area in town, or is it here and there, it's kind of scattered everywhere?
It is kind of here and there, but it is trying to tie into the portions that we replaced in the last project. So in the last project, we truly were hopping around town just trying to get the absolute worst replaced because they were really chasing their tails and trying to stay ahead of the game. And so we're trying to fill in those gaps now. And we're doing a pretty good job of that. There's, but there's still some pretty healthy runs of cast iron that are remaining, but these are the worst.
For that meeting tomorrow, do I just tell you, do I bring anything?
Just show up. If you have a copy of the preliminary engineering report, bring it. If not, I will bring you one. Okay? No, really, the requirement is that a representative from the city be there. So as long as you're there, between myself and Debbie Beck and Nicole, we'll do most of the talking. There may be a question that comes your way, but it's stuff that you can answer probably off the top of your head. There's no reason to take a tote full of papers.
Okay.
So, really, the, I guess, the thing that we wanted to talk about is if the city is, has thought any about what you want to use for your matching source of funds for the, the six hundred and five thousand, that would be the local match portion. The, the logical options are, if you had cash on hand, cash is king. The KDHE State Revolving Loan Fund, it's a low-interest twenty-year amortization loan. Current interest rate is approximately two point three three percent. USDA is also a, a logical choice. USDA is a little bit different in the fact that you would still have to get temporary financing for, for financing during construction. So you'd either have to issue bonds, or you would have to use the KDHE low-interest loan. So you'd either have to issue bonds, or you would have to use the KDHE low-interest loan. The only upside to USDA, and I don't want to muddy the water, but USDA does not have a limit to the number of dollars that you can borrow, and they also have a loan program, or a grant, excuse me, a grant program. Conceivably, we have not talked about this, but conceivably, you could replace all of your cast iron lines all at once. It'd be a much more expensive project. It would be a bigger project, it'd take longer to complete, but USDA might be that block, that entity that could help you get the whole thing done. I haven't looked at how big of a project that might be. But USDA will ask us a question tomorrow. Do you want to consider the whole, you know, all of the cast iron lines in town? And my recollection from past meetings is that I, my impression is that the city felt like the $600,000 mark was about as far as the city wanted to extend yourselves. If something changes, let me know, but, so, moving on, the other...
What's your, what's your ballpark of what you think it could take? Another million, is that what you said?
I think it's in that ballpark, yes.
I mean, I was just thinking. I'm out here, sorry.
I mean, you've got quite a few, don't you, Jess? I mean, I...
Well, the last project did, I think, 18% of the lines in town.
The last project would have been, gosh, I gotta think.
2010.
Yeah, but how many dollars worth? About...
I think it was 600,000.
600,000? But not six, but that was 600 total.
The whole project.
Now we're talking about 1.2 million for this next phase. It's a big chunk.
If, if those numbers are linear, then we would be somewhere around, what, 55 to 60% complete?
Oh, I think so, a little more, with the, the stuff that's bad and that you're, that you're wanting to replace. Yeah, I would say. Something like that, but there's still...
That's not something that's got to be answered before you go to this meeting tomorrow, is it?
No.
Do we need to decide on financing, whether we want to try for USDA or KDHE?
It would be best if we knew what your desires were. The other option are low, or not low, but bonds. You could issue bonds. In most projects this size, you will find that KDHE low-interest loan is going to be the financing mechanism that is going to save you the most money. It's a relatively simple process. There are strings attached to it, but it's a relatively straightforward process. It means Heather gets to do some additional paperwork. I'm sure she enjoys that, but, but it is a pretty straightforward process. And with the interest, the interest rate is really hard to beat, 2 point, I mean, the last thing I heard was 2.33%. It's a very attractive interest rate.
So is there any way to get an idea from USDA as to availability of grant money?
We will ask them tomorrow. Six weeks ago, they were telling us that they had all this money to spend and that they needed projects. The last thing I heard from them is that they still need projects, but they've spent all their grant money.
It didn't take long, no.
It doesn't. They don't get as much, anywhere near as much of an allocation of grant money as they have projects for, and that's an ongoing problem, but, I mean, it's just...
Their interest is a little bit higher, is it 3.25?
So what's our chances tomorrow of getting this? I mean...
Well, you don't get anything tomorrow.
Well, I can remember, what was tomorrow?
Okay, so tomorrow is, I need to back up a little bit. Tomorrow is a kayak meeting. That is an acronym for Kansas Inter-Agency Committee. So we sit down with USDA, Rural Development, Kansas Department of Commerce, KDHE, and the Kansas Water Office. And we basically present our project to them, and they say, okay, that sounds like a good project. They might have a few comments and questions for us, and then we go our separate ways. But by attending this meeting, you don't get deducted 10 points in the rating system. If you don't go, you get deducted, and it's the kiss of death. So it's critical that we go, we attend, we participate, but there's no brownie points for asking extra questions or providing more information. It's just a go, and you're, and you're in good shape, and if you don't go, then you're deducted.
So one thing for me, I will also administer KDHE or Rural Development or, you know, that other financing for your local, through the project and everything, I will submit all the pay requests for both KDHE and CBG. The crucial thing for me right now is having, needing to know, because if this council decides to go with USDA Rural Development, I have a, it's called an RD Apply, it's a pre-application that I do all online, that has to be sent in and submitted by September 1st. In order to give them time to comment back to me and send a letter by September 15th, that has to go in with the application for CBVG. KDHE, I'm gonna verify this tomorrow when we're at the kayak meeting, but I talked to Lloyd Carr last week, and he indicated that there was not an application that we needed to do before the CBVG. They would provide a letter and say, yes, we will support this, and we will have the loan, you know, provide a loan in this amount of money for the project, which would have to submit the CBVG application.
So when is USDA likely to have more grant money? Are they on some sort of cycle?
They are. October 1st is when they would have additional funds. I, I would also say that for all of the funding mechanisms, CBVG included, I think that your, your project certainly has merit. I think it will score fairly well, but anything that has a wastewater treatment component or a water treatment component for compliance, those are going to be the projects that likely receive some preferential rating. So this may be an issue where we have to apply for a couple of years. I mean, that's, you just kind of have to play the game.
So when do you know if we get accepted or not?
Second or third week in January.
And they did, it used to be when the city applied twice for the same project, by serendipity, and they did not get funded through CBVG, that you had to wait three years before you could apply for that project again. They've thrown that out, so you can apply multiple times.
We can keep applying and apply.
And just so that the city hears this, there are a lot of communities that are facing this exact same issue. A lot of them are applying for the same CBVG dollars to replace cast iron water lines. It's really, I mean, the age of these systems varies, but they're really starting to show up and really be problematic for communities. It's not just small towns, it's not just large towns, it's everybody. I've got, you know, you were talking about size. I've got a project, you know, kind of in the heart of Larded, Kansas, and we've kind of identified about three or four million dollars worth of water lines there. And that's not all of them, that's just the worst in that zone. And there's date back to the 1890s. And there's really, really...
So if we go to this meeting and tell them we're planning on using KDHE loan, does that still make us eligible for the USDA grant?
We would have to apply for a USDA grant.
Yeah, but I mean, it's still possible to add that into this project?
Oh, yeah.
Either as part of our 600,000 or as a possible expansion? What I'm saying, I guess what I'm asking is, if we tell them this is what we want to do at your meeting, it's not going to block us out of adding on USDA money later on?
That's correct.
Okay.
And if you would like for either of us to ask any specific questions of USDA, we could certainly do that. But in my opinion, in order for USDA to be a good partner on this project, you would really want to increase the size of the project, because USDA has more requirements and it's really geared towards even larger projects than what we are looking at. So if you are going to pursue USDA, my recommendation to you would be to do all of it, and you're probably looking at a two-plus-million-dollar project. That's not, to say that's not a good plan, it's just, you know, does the city want to take something that size on?
If USDA grant money was available, and we decided to go with 200, or the 2 million project, is there a way that it can still be the city's obligation to limit it to that 600,000?
No.
Go ahead.
No, you would be, let me think about that for just a little bit. Your commitment would probably be 1 to 1.2 million at that, at that point. If we were talking a $2 million project, you would probably be looking at somewhere in that 1.2 million. Based on past, the way USDA has funded projects in the past, they will never give their maximum grant allocation to one individual project. They kind of like to spread it around. And the way that they spread it around is they amortize their loan portion over a 40-year period. So you're looking at a 40-year note, and they, they use that 40 years to drive the annual payments down, so it looks better to the, you know, to the bottom line for this year, but you've got 40 years of that to put up with.
So the CDVG grant and the USDA grant are totally independent of each other?
Absolutely.
So we can't, we can't pursue both?
No, you actually can pursue both, but even if, I probably didn't do a very good job of describing that, but even if you get the full CDVG grant, you will only get a portion of what you would be eligible for on the USDA side, because they're going to look at the total project budget, and they're going to say, hey, the city got $600,000 of CDVG money, so they only need 200 or 300,000 of our grant money, we'll make up the rest with our loan money.
Okay. So ba, so basically, if we, if we would say we're going to do the entire project, our out-of-pocket would be relatively the same, whether we got CDVG and USDA, or if we got just USDA?
Yeah. That's a fair statement.
Okay. So unless, unless we're willing to risk doing the whole project with just the CDVG grant, then we need to stay with what we're, where we have it scheduled now?
Yes. If, if you want my, you're not asking for it, but if you want my recommendation, I would suggest that we go one year with just a pure CDVG grant with matching funds. If you want to use KDHE, that's fine. And then if we're not successful this year, then we see what the financial picture looks like for USDA, and we revisit it next, oh, next Christmas, or well, it'd be February, revisit and see if it makes sense to dust this off and then go for the whole thing. But I think it makes sense to go for the CDVG for at least one year and see how we rate. There has been maybe rumor that CDVG has more money than they've had in the past, and that they are planning to fund a few more projects than they have in the past. So who knows? Take that with a grain of salt, because I don't know that that's fact, but there has been discussion about that.
I think that sounds like the wisest choice. The chances of getting both grants in one year are pretty small, anyway, I would say.
I think fighting off the whole thing is a lot more than we can chew right now.
That 2.33 at KDHE sounds like the smartest draw, also.
Yes, I agree.
And that comes with, I mean, there's no free penalty payoff if you guys have something, you donate a million dollars to the city.
I like your thinking. So do we need a motion to decide which way we're going tonight? I guess, because they need an answer, right?
I would move that we pursue the CDVG grant and KDHE loan for the current 1.2 million dollar project.
Second.
Any more discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Any more opposed? Thank you, Nicole. Stuart, happy evening.
Thank you. We'll let you know how the kayak, well, Heather will let you know how the kayak is.
I was gonna say, you coming back?
Be there early or...
Nope. I mean, it's either 10 minutes before.
Yeah.
That'll be perfect.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Memorial bench at the park.
Jess, did Ethel talk to you after she, you sent her to my house? She was supposed to get back to me. The family of Bob Zacko wants to put a bench, a memorial bench for Bob in the park. They have enough memorial funds to do it. They want it to be like the recycled tire material, so it won't rust, it won't be painted, it won't break. She was supposed to get back to me with a location by tonight, and I haven't heard from her, so, oh, well, maybe that's why she's not here. So do we want to wait until I have more information from her?
I would.
Okay.
I would say so. Worship runs, that's probably pretty important.
Okay.
The table until next meeting?
Yeah.
Anything else on that? League of Kansas Municipalities Voting Delegate and Alternate.
Did you skip the City of All Stonework Ben?
He did.
We, I withdrew that one.
Oh, okay.
Not ready yet.
I thought everyone was going deaf.
We need some volunteers. Jack, is anyone planning on going to?
Who is it?
October 6th to the 8th. They're always weekends.
That might be a good too.
No other volunteers?
I thought about it, I'm out of town for pretty, for three or four days, like 10 days prior to that. My wife may not be very happy about me being around with old kids. What about you, Mr. Mayor? Did you, are you looking to see if that's a home K-State game? Is that what you're looking at?
There you go. Schedule. There, that's the way you do it, isn't it? Yeah, I'm not gonna be there.
You're gonna be in Manhattan, not Topeka?
Yeah.
Okay.
I already planned all the skips I can skip without my wife's divorce papers.
Do we have to have two? They, we're allowed to.
They want, can't do that.
No, we're allowed to.
I'll do. Delegate and alternate. We should draw straws.
Well, I, I'm open to the idea if, if Jack is not available, but I don't, I definitely don't want to be the first choice.
I don't think it'll be a problem for me if something comes up, I'll let you know, but... but I gotta leave him to go.
You want a motion?
Sure.
I move we designate Jack as the voting delegate and Elijah as the alternate for the League of Kansas municipalities.
Uh, second.
I second.
Any more discussion, council? All in favor? Any opposed? Moving on, nuisance report.
I'll save this until Jess gets his schedule or his listing analyzed. We have the MT rentals coming up later as an agenda item. And we've had Mr. Buttonoff's hearing. Court will, or court, the council will need to make a determination on that before the evening's over.
A determination in regards to what, the mowing bill?
No, this, the, uh, the matter before the Mr. Buttonoff and which he requested the hearing on, I think involves the mowing bill, it's primarily the health issues that was included in the materials that were provided. The notice. And, and of course, the council could decide to defer it or whatever the council might choose to do, but I think since the hearing took place this evening at the owner's request, then the next step is for the council to make its determination, make its finding, which will then be followed by a notification or resolution or whatever the council chooses to do. Of course, it could be followed by a complaint, depending on what the council decides to do after having heard the evidence.
After the issue was first discovered by the city, was there a letter sent to Mr. Buttonoff notifying him to resolve the problem?
Yes, and it was unclaimed. Which resulted in the city enforcement officer posting the notice at the res- at the residential site, which was ordinance permitted.
Did you picture that in there?
Which was posted on the door? Yes. Oh, I'll, Jess can address that. I know that that stop was intended to have three little ones.
And then after the ordinance was posted on the door, was there any repairs done in the allotted amount of time stated in, as stated in the ordinance?
Well, there's still no proper repairs.
Well, I think Jess addressed that when he was responding to Mr. Buttonoff's statement. And my understanding was that there was an attempt to make some repairs and that it wasn't successful.
Yes, the, the tenth of July is when it was posted, and I took pictures and those pictures should be in there, was it posted on the door?
And according to what?
And according to, I think, I made contact with City Hall the sixteenth saying it was, that he was repairing it. And then I waited to the ten days he had allowed and I did a re-inspection, the twenty-fourth, and that's when I, uh, noticed the dripping. The pipe was back together, but it didn't, went off fluid together and so it's still running.
No, it's an extra head of water. That kind of, just the ten days.
That was, what was requested, the hearing was requested, not exactly within that time, but it was sufficient time.
Is there anything else on your nuisance report you asked?
That number one, I made contact, was that's been on there a while, I need to get something done with this, and I made contact, literally said a cylinder on the back was out and they were supposed to be working on it, but I've allowed this to go as long as I need to. I need to send a letter on this and also a new report.
Yeah, I think one eighteen is adequate time.
Right.
I have a question in regards to this. I'm under the understanding that if we don't enforce these ordinances that we're on the hook with the state farm, is that accurate?
We would be answerable to the state, yes.
Okay. So it's not just a responsibility to our own ordinances that this be handled?
That's correct.
What's the, what's the course of action that needs to be taken to correct it or do we want to get into that much detail? Is there, is there topsoil removal that has to happen or what's?
The soil should be removed right now. It's been lined twice to kill the bacteria and keep the smell down through the neighborhood. There is a ordinance saying that the city could have the water disconnected until this is fixed. And, uh, the other option is get KDHE involved or the city cleans it up and builds it. Unless, unless, I mean, I know there's court, it just can go to court also.
Well, it can't go, it's, I just, the, what I was referring to a little bit ago, the, the hearing has been conducted, or is being conducted, and upon conclusion of the hearing, the findings of the governing body shall be prepared in a resolution form adopted by the governing body. Of course, it's gonna take some time to get the resolution prepared and backed before the council, but whatever is, whatever is to be decided needs to be put forth in the resolution. And of course, you have the, uh, potential of what you just mentioned that the ordinances provide for. And of course, they provide, it provides that, that there be a payment, that they, those are, both of those things can happen. Depending on what the city's findings are.
All those invoices that went around, have those been paid or are those outstanding?
Outstanding.
None of them have been paid, but only one, one or two are, are relevant to this particular process. They have not been paid.
But if the city goes in and cleans it up and sends him the bill, we're probably not gonna get paid for it since he already has outstanding invoices.
Be that as it may, it's got to be resolved.
But if we go in and clean it up, I think we should shut the water off so we don't have to go in and clean it up again, because if the problem doesn't get fixed, we're gonna be continually going in and cleaning it up.
The leak in there will be fixed by Wednesday evening.
What about the cleanup and all the things that have to happen?
What are you specifying cleanup?
All of it. Trash, all the pictures, all of it.
I'll have that done by next Monday.
On whose approval?
I guess Jess's.
Fair enough with me.
Will that line have to be removed? What, what, uh, if he cleans that up, he'll be removing the line with the dirt. I mean, he doesn't have to go down like a foot. He doesn't. We are, we are, we still put. And you can tell him on the soil.
And if it ain't done by Monday? What then?
What, we go forward.
Whole meter.
We go forward with your resolution, which you could include shutting the water off. That's, you know, prejudge what your findings were gonna be, but that's what the resolution can contain.
And the resolution, would that have to wait till I ask council?
Well, most, yeah, most likely would.
Unless we had a special meeting to approve it.
Which you could have.
What's the, uh, what's the urgency level of this in terms of the needs for resolution if, if things aren't in compliance? I mean, I, do we, we've been aware of this problem for X amount of time. What, I wanna make sure we stay out of bigger problems with KDHE and, and whatever other entities that we fall under. Is there a timeframe we need to be looking at?
All, all they told me at the time that I've dealt with this before, they said you have to give them that ten days to get it cleaned up. And after that, I don't know. I'm hoping with the recommendations I got was using the line to kill the bacteria, but that gives allows him time to get it out of there. Because that's what kills the bacteria and the smell, but that's not a fixed job. That's just trying to cover it up until it's cleaned up.
Well, you have to give ten days anyway, so I would say you can move forward with, with the finding and then, and that there will be a resolution, but in the meantime, Mr. Buttonoff had said that he was going to take care of it by Monday. That's within the ten days, so see if that's going to happen.
I say that, how's, how about this, Mr. Buttonoff? How about Jess and I come and inspect it? So you got not just his opinion, but my opinion by next Monday, and if it's cleaned up, we won't shut the water off. And if it's not cleaned up, then we're shutting the water off. Is that fair enough with you?
Yeah.
And I think that'll give it us a biased opinion between him and me, and I ain't got, I'll be as fair as fair can be, the same as he's been, so.
Does that include the dirt cleaned up?
I, I think it includes everything.
Having the junk and everything.
Everything cleaned up.
Tires, tires.
Everything cleaned up.
Everything.
Fair enough?
Fair enough. Okay, that brings up one other thing, Jess said tires. There's a whole big pile of tires being built behind the liquor store.
Built?
That's what I said.
Built? Tires built?
They're on pallets or whatever, there's several hundred. I'll take a look at it.
I can tell you exactly where they came from.
Towers.
And it's in the backyard of an employee's home. And I can, I don't have any management in-house this week, but I can make a couple of phone calls and if you guys want those moved, we can fix that.
Because they'll be on the chopping block.
That's right.
Next month.
They're on trailers, they're not on the ground, they're on trailers.
No, there's a bunch of them on the ground. There's two trailer loads plus a bunch on the ground.
It's still a violation.
My response to that is, that it be investigated if it's a violation, yes, it goes on the list and it gets dealt with, but it has no bearing on Mr. Buttonoff's property that we're dealing with.
Yes, sir.
So we need a motion?
I entertained a motion of what I, what I said, if somebody would.
I move that we allow.
I would like to know what time Monday. It seems like we have a problem.
Eight AM.
That or for me, next Monday.
Thank you.
I move that we grant Keith Buttonhoff until Monday morning, August thirteenth at eight AM, or August twentieth, sorry, August twentieth at eight AM to have his pipe under his house repaired, one foot of dirt removed where the leak has occurred, and all the trash and debris on the property cleaned up.
As pictures stated, because I'm taking the pictures with him, because I haven't been there.
As shown in the pictures. If it is not cleaned up, the water meter will be removed at said time.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anything else on nuisances? City official report, city attorney.
You have a resolution in front of you as a result of the notification that was given with regard to the M, sorry, MNT property. And I believe MT rentals, and I believe Mr. Towery and maybe.
No, just Mr. Towery.
Mrs. Towery.
Well, you can tell us who you are, and I think you're here regarding MNT rentals.
Right. I had every intention of having it cleaned and done by this meeting, so what I have done is I went to the county and I got the reduced fees for the landfill. So then when I took it out to the, when I took the form out to the landfill, I was not under the understanding that I had to do it all in one day. Well, I have a Suburban and a four by eight trailer. There was no way in hell I was gonna do it in one day. So I've contacted two other people and I also have contacted Mr. Larson, also Rodney Larson. I did get two other quotes to remove the house and take it out to the landfill. I think I'm going to go with Mr. Larson. I think I'm going to go with Mr. Larson. He's the cheapest of the, of the bids that I have got. So hopefully I can get something moving this week. I'm not quite sure what his schedule is like, but I did talk to him this afternoon or this, this morning. He said he might be able to get to it this week to get it removed and out to the landfill. So, I do have a plan in action.
Is there a basement under that house?
There is a basement under that house.
Do you have plans to fill in the basement?
I do have plans to fill in the basement. But my other, my other question is, is what would the city charge me if the city came in to do that? Do they charge you like an hourly rate? Do they charge you, how do they do that? Do they add it to my taxes? Do they, what, what do they do?
It, it would be an hourly rate and it would, Rodney would be a lot. A hundred dollars an hour for each piece of equipment. So it can add up quite.
I, I just, I just kind of wanted to figure out what my options are.
He's got more of the equipment for that kind of removal anyways than we, I mean, we can do it, but.
Has there ever been discussion where you, that they could release that property?
That was, I believe that was mentioned in my phone conversation with you as a guy.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody, they do.
Yeah, they, they know that that is an option that they have. Just needing, just needing the.
It's not an option.
Not an option in.
That, that's, that's where I'm at.
But I knew we had talked about it.
Yeah. It's an option for you guys, yes, but it's not an option on my end.
So my question is, how come you didn't do anything in the ten days you were given after you received the notice? Because we're way past your ten days if you just contacted Rodney last week.
Well, because I thought I could remove it myself. But I did, I did contact the city attorney within the ten days.
I think that, that did happen, I can agree with that. He called me and I told him that we would be moving forward with the resolution and that he, and that when this meeting was and that the absolute last resort would be having it done by this meeting.
Right.
If he could. My suggestion would be, well, the council can choose its path here, but you have the resolution before you you won't be having another city meeting for a month. I would suggest that you go forward with the resolution because it won't be, and it even provides another ten days within the terms of the resolution for you to get it done. So I don't know if that is realistic or not, but at least the council will have accomplished its abatement resolution as the ordinances provide, so.
So that allows him another ten days. I mean, just to understand this, right? And he gets ten more days basically?
Before the city can move forward and do it, do it by the city.
That, that was my feeling and going to be my suggestion as we, we approach it the same way we have with some of the others in the past on South Street where we had contingencies, but we went ahead and abated it so that if, if promises weren't lived up to then all the mechanisms were in place to deal with it. Especially where, is this the one that's, that's partially pushed down already? Yeah, we want to make sure that gets cleaned up quickly. And we also don't want a gaping hole over there for any length of time, so.
Yeah, I say we proceed with it. I mean, it's ten days he's got.
I, I guess.
Entertained motion.
I would move that we adopt resolution number eighteen dash oh three for the abatement of a nuisance.
Second.
Any further discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
I can go.
Or abstain?
Abstain. Abstain, I'm going to listen to him, concur.
Anything else, city attorney, that's all I have.
Mr. Matt, thank you.
City clerk? Nothing? City superintendent? Nothing?
Did you say something about the backhoe cylinder repair?
That was on line one with the.
Nuisance. Oh, okay. Okay.
Governing body, Lisa?
Um, I have two things. First, I want to thank city staff for installing the two additional benches the Pride acquired. And I know this has come up before and we kind of put it on the back burner. But Lee Madro isn't getting any younger. And he's asked, been asked to be replaced as cemetery sexton, so I think.
He's asked?
He has. He's come to us and.
Yeah, he's asked, yeah.
Before he's gone and he doesn't have time to train anybody, I would think we maybe need to seriously take a look at finding someone. I don't have anyone in mind, but I seen a measure in the grade the other day and I thought, you know, that's an art and that's not something that anybody could just.
Do.
Yeah. So I thought maybe I'd throw that out there and everybody could think.
He didn't have any suggestions that, that last time he was in here, did he?
No, he didn't.
You think it'd be worth anything just to put a small one ad in the newspaper, see if there's anybody local that might be interested in that? I mean, it wouldn't cost us much and you never know who might respond.
It wouldn't hurt anything.
You're probably going to get some, I mean, local newspapers, I mean.
Probably wise to talk with the funeral home and see if they might know somebody too.
Jack, as a good, can I, with your permission, I'd like to say something. I think that's probably something to be done in the future, but even though Mr. Madro has not suggested somebody, I think in consideration of the length of time that he's been doing this and all he, he's devoted to it, I kind of hate to have him see an ad in the paper without talking to him again. Because he takes it very personally.
It's probably good.
I was just thinking that someone might need training from him.
Sure.
And.
All, all of your thoughts were, were good. I just think it ought not be a published job at this rate.
Who's going to make that contact?
I'd be glad to talk to him. I mean, I've already talked to him about things, probably the cemetery, so. But I don't, I mean, if someone on the council, he probably knows someone, council would do it, but I'd be glad to talk to him. If he wants me to, to see if he's got, had any further time to think about who his replacement might be or might be a candidate for.
There's so many years of knowledge there. He could, I don't think he'd make it fathom that much. You'd have to learn it. Yeah, in a short period of time. Anything else? What's next? Uh, both of them? Like you said, too?
I'd like to thank you and the sorcerers.
You want me to talk to him then about?
Yeah.
Okay, I will, I will do that.
That would be good.
Report at the next meeting.
This is Larson. Mr. Keith?
Nope.
Mr. Zizan? Mr. Crystal?
Well, I'm not sure what everybody's opinion is of NATO these days and whether the United States ought to still be participating and who's paying how much. But I would like to point out a little-known member of NATO, Norway. Norway doesn't have very many people and so doesn't have much of an army, but they do have a very impressive navy. And in fact, NATO has always relied on Norway to keep track of what's going on with the Russian Navy in the North Sea. One of the things that's an obvious difference between the US Navy and Norwegian Navy is the US Navy always paints the names right on the side of boats, USS John Kennedy and stuff like that. Norway uses barcodes, stripes about ten feet tall right on the side of the ship. It's strictly an efficiency measure because when the ships return to port, they can just scan the Navy in.
God!
I'm moving adjourned.
All in favor?
Aye.
That was like totally off the wall.